Okay. I would like to call the April twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Mr. Secretary, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Edsall?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Okay, I'm back, I think. It was telling me that I was disabled from the host.
Okay, we have you, thank you. Commissioner Vander Mullen, we got you, you commute, thank you. Vice Chairman Espinoza?
Here, thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, we got you. And Chairman Talmage?
Here, thank you. Greetings, everyone. I have asked Commissioner Edsall to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you pledge your hand over your heart or render salute, we will do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
We have the minutes of our previous meeting, March sixteenth, for review and approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
I'm going to approve.
I'll second.
All right. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. I guess we approve the minutes of the meeting of April four, of March sixteenth. I think we need to do a roll call vote.
That's correct. We do a voice vote due to Zoom. Thank you.
Right. So can we do a roll call vote for the approval of the minutes of March sixteenth?
Commissioner Murphy?
I approve.
Commissioner Edsall?
Yes.
Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Espinoza?
Yes.
Chairman Talmage?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you.
Unanimous approved. And now we have the review and approval of the minutes of the special meeting with the City Council of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do I hear a motion for approval of those minutes?
To approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion by the commission? Hearing none. We'll do another roll call vote.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Edsall?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Espinoza?
Yes.
Chairman Talmage?
Yes.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Hey, the minutes for those two meetings have been approved. Now we have item six on the agenda, public comments. This is the time and this is the place for members of the public to address the commission on a matter not on the agenda tonight. Do we have anyone in the audience that cares to speak and address the commission? Are there any in the audience?
Chairman Talmage, I see no hands raised.
Thank you. With no one offering comment, I think that concludes the public comment section. Now we move on to item seven, the public hearing for conditional use permit four oh eight, Donahue Schreiber Realty Group LLC for Rite Aid. And do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, we do. Thank you very much, Chairman Talmage. Mr. McLaren will be presenting this item to the planning commission in public.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Can everybody see the presentation on the screen?
Not yet. Paul, we don't see it.
Okay. Now, can everybody see?
Yes, you're good now.
All right, got it, got it right now. All right. So good evening, this is a conditional use permit four oh eight for Rite Aid for a general alcohol sales for off-site consumption. The location is at the Village Square, Camarillo Village Square Shopping Center, which is Arneal and Las Poses Road. The project currently has a Rite Aid as one of the tenants, but they are moving to a smaller space and in the new location that's being built out for them. The applicant requests approval of a conditional use permit to allow the sale of packaged beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption as a permitted use in a portion of a fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-six square foot commercial space in the Camarillo Village Square Shopping Center. This is the site as it existed before construction began with wood frame construction where the supercuts and the other tenant spaces were here. And then this is the site as it currently exists, where they have actually removed the wood frame construction here so that they can get the ceiling height that Rite Aid will need, and it will have concrete masonry block for the rest of the building. And then they're also going to build out the tower element here and a tower element here that will match some of the other improvements that have gone on in the shopping center. And when it's all done, the front of the shopping center should look like this with Sprouts being here to the right, and then the gym being here at the back, and then on the other side, the gym would be off to your left, and this would be the side view from this new tenant space. The Rite Aid currently holds a type twenty-one ABC license at its present location in the shopping center, but the municipal code was modified in two thousand eight requiring that type twenty-one licenses, which is for off-sale, get a conditional use permit in order to continue to operate in the city if they are changing their location. And so Rite Aid is currently considered illegal non-conforming use because it doesn't have a CUP currently. By moving to the new address, they're required under the code to get a CUP, which is why we're here tonight. And that will ensure that the city can appropriately locate the site and make sure it's properly operated and monitored so that we can verify that they're operating in accordance with their conditions of approval. The site plan again is we have a Las Poses Road to the north, Arneal to the west, and then you come in the shopping center in a couple of different locations, and as you come off Las Poses Road, it will be directly in front of you as you're coming into the entrance off of Las Poses Road. The floor plan, it's fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-six square feet. This section here in the front is where they are building out the tower element, and then the entrance will be off there. The cashiers will be immediately here, and there is at least fifty feet to where the alcohol sales will be. This alcohol sales constitutes a hundred and eighty-seven square feet or one point five percent of the entire store. For shelving, it's seven point eight-five percent of the shelving for the store. They do have additional overstocked storage in the back storage room. They're also are building a loading dock off the back in order to serve this Rite Aid. The pharmacy would be right here, and of course, the most important part, you know, the Thrifty's Ice Cream is going back right here. In the census tract five four zero one, where this is located, there are currently twelve licenses. Rite Aid being one of those licenses, it's a variety of different types of licenses. If you go and you look at this map of the census tract five four zero one, you can see that those licenses are concentrated in the commercial areas within the census tract with Bonds and CVS down here and then a couple of restaurant uses. And then up here, the existing Rite Aid, and then we have Sprouts, and then we have some other restaurants, and then the realm beer and wine. So it's a total of two type twenty licenses, two type twenty-one licenses, four type forty-one licenses, three type forty-seven licenses. But again, in total, it will still just be twelve licenses because the Rite Aid licenses moved. The project has been reviewed and found to be in compliance with the requirements of the city code with respect to parking and loading. The new Rite Aid will require fifty-seven parking spaces at a ratio of one to two hundred and fifty. The required spaces in the shopping center are one thousand one hundred and one, and the shopping center is currently providing one thousand one hundred and one. The project, as I said before, requires one loading space, which will be provided behind the building. The project was reviewed in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state secret guidelines, as well as the city's environmental guidelines, and it was determined to be categorically exempt under class one existing facilities. Class one includes operations of existing structures that involve negligible expansion. And since the issuance of this CUP permit is operational only, it does involve negligible expansion. So staff recommends approval of CUP four oh eight subject to the conditions of approval, and the action of the planning commission is final, and an appeal is filed within ten days of the date of their action. And that ends my presentation.
All right. We, this is a public hearing, so I would like to open the public hearing for any comments from the public on this particular application for a approval of the liquor license. Are there any persons in the audience that would care to comment? Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, I just had a couple of comment, or questions for staff.
Ah, very well.
Okay.
I wanted to verify that there were no responses from the public noticing.
That is correct, there were no responses.
Oh, thank you. And then the proposed size, how does, of the Rite Aid, how does that compare with the existing size, if you know?
It's approximately two-thirds the size of the existing. So the existing is twenty-three thousand six hundred square feet, and the proposed is fourteen thousand square feet. So about eight thousand square feet less.
I see. And then the proposed alcohol shelving or area space for the proposed, how does that compare with the existing?
It's similar in size to the existing.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything further.
Are there any other comments from the commission or questions of staff? I have one quick question for staff. The new building that Rite Aid is moving to, a there is construction of a new part of that building to accommodate Rite Aid. What's the square footage of the addition?
The total addition will actually only give, add nine hundred and forty-three square feet to what was existing prior to the demolition. So the net gain is nine hundred and forty-three square feet.
Oh, I see. So what you're doing is the difference between what was the hair cutting salon and others, there's a net add above that. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, I understand. Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Thank you. I just, this probably is not having to do with the CUP as much, but one of the things I read having to do with the licenses for selling the alcohol. Do they have, do all the employees, because they're changing locations, still have to redo their LEAD course?
If they have valid LEAD courses, then they won't need to redo them, but that is a condition of approval that we have the ability to verify that all the employees have actually committed, completed their courses, and they're
Okay. So as long as they have it, they're okay?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commission of staff? All right, with that, I will now, again, open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this matter?
Chair Talmage, I see no hands raised.
Very well. Since no one has raised a hand, no one's indicated interest to comment. I close the public hearing. All right, we're at the point of any commission comments on the, on the matter at hand? Are there any comments? Commissioner Edsall?
Yeah, I think this is pretty straightforward. They've had the same liquor license since nineteen ninety-five, and they're just before the CUP requirement, so we're just bringing them in with compliance. It doesn't seem like their operation's gonna change much. And in our report on page six, the police department even got a chance to review it, and they don't see any issues in that center at all. You know, no complaints or anything, so I support it. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Vice Chair Espinoza?
Yes, I did want to ask a question of the applicant, if I could. I wanted to find out that, that seems to be a significant reduction as far as the floor area between existing and where it will move. So I wondered what exactly they weren't gonna be doing in terms of what they were gonna stock or change with the new location, and are they gonna be reducing their number of employees as a result?
So.
Of the applicant here?
Yeah, so Mitchell is with Rite Aid, he is here, and he can speak on this.
Good afternoon, or good evening?
Good evening.
What is, what we're seeing is a trend, and we've had larger stores, and we're just essentially reducing the number of products that we're selling over the years. There's been a change in focus, the consumers and the customers at our stores. And so we're, I guess you would say we were rightsizing, we're reducing down to a size to be able to sell the products that our customers are actually more interested in and getting and doing away with certain items that just take up space.
What are you thinking? Are there is the workforce gonna be reduced as a result?
I do, I do not know what the final, I'm the construction manager. I can't tell you exactly where that workforce will go. We don't want to reduce it to where we can't offer proper, you know, proper staffing for the customers and proper customer service. Right now, we, we weren't intending to reduce the workforce, but I can't tell you what will happen five years from now or four years even.
Right, yeah, it may not impact the number of people you still need, but just wanted to find out specifically how that was gonna change. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Not so much a question, I don't think, as, other than just a comment, because I do, am often in Rite Aid, and then sometimes also go to Sprouts, except that I will go from one and drive to the other, so it'll be nice to have them right next to each other. And, you know, as far as the comment on some of the items going away, I notice when I'm in there, there are a lot of, like, the clothing section kind of dwindles down and takes up space. You know, so I do see areas where there are kind of, at this point, kind of wasted blank areas. And so if everything was more compact and utilized, I think it'll make a difference, even though it's a smaller space.
Yes, we used to have, for instance, areas like fishing and sporting goods and larger automotive departments, and we're just, that's not what we are. We, we're not, you know, there's auto zone and other places for that sort of thing. So we're just trying to, you know, refocus what we're good at, and we are keeping Thrifty Ice Cream.
I saw that right up front, thank you.
You will.
Yeah, I think it'll make a difference because the store will look more used and useful rather than the wasted space and stuff when you walk through it now. And it just kind of looks dated and empty and not utilized like it should be. So.
Well, I hope you, I hope you like the final result when we're
Thank you. Don't, don't do away with Senior Wednesdays, though.
Okay. I will give, I will give with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Talmage. Yeah, this looks straightforward to me. It's, I'm hoping that the building space that will be vacated can be filled with an interested tenant. The shopping center is well occupied, it's vibrant, and, and again, I'm hoping that that we can find a tenant for that, but that's not something that Rite Aid is responsible for. It looks, looks nice. I now know exactly where the ice cream is, and that's the most important part to me. So I can certainly support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a couple of miscellaneous questions, actually more to the applicant. I was looking, and I found finally, the graphic that we saw tonight showed it very clearly, the location of the pharmacy. And I know there are specific requirements for security around the pharmacy because of various medications that are stored or kept there. And I wonder if you could just offer some comment about the security on the pharmacy and its supplies?
With regards to pharmacy security, we take that very, very seriously. The entire perimeter is secured to structure. We will, we install a security gate that is closed and locked during the evening. The entire space is alarmed with both burglar and motion sensors and cameras. And that's separate from the rest of the security system in the, in the store, because if we the pharmacy regulations are very, very strict, and we don't want to jeopardize those. We also include a biometric safe for storage of some of the pharmaceuticals that we consider some, you know, something we need to control a little bit better to keep people out of it. And if all of our and if all of our current security measures, somehow somebody gets around, you know, somebody tries to violate them, like during the day, we've had people try, you know, in stores from time to time. We'll make additional adjustments to security because two reasons. One is, of course, we don't want people getting hold of the pharmaceuticals, but we also want to keep our staff safe. And so we want to do everything we can to keep it that way.
I appreciate those comments. I think that's very appropriate, and I think it's important for us to hear that. The other question I had, I noticed also with regard to the pharmacy, there's waiting seating area. It seems the way things are going these days that more and more people are going to be going to pharmacies for inoculations. We've seen that, of course, happen with COVID. But I know previously that's where you went to get your flu shot, or maybe a tetanus shot or other kinds of things. Is there any increase in size for the waiting and accommodating people getting inoculations, or is it about the same?
Well, one of the things we've done is we've, part of our philosophy on how we're trying to interact and how we're trying to assist the customer has changed over the years. We have started this store will include it, we have started in building separate consultation rooms, which are part of the pharmacy, which are private for customers to get shots. This particular pharmacy, we're adding an additional space for virtual care communication with, with doctors, again, in a closed, private space. So we're trying to expand the services to our customers at the pharmacy.
That's excellent. I like the very last thing you said about the virtual connection, because it seems like now many doctors are going to the same, where you're having a virtual appointment as opposed to go in and sit and wait and then go see the doctor in person. So I think it's very important to recognize that, and I think those are it's not really related to the approval we have tonight, but I think it helps understand more of what Rite Aid is doing to provide the necessary service to its customers and to its clients. So thank you for those comments.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments from the commission? We have a resolution for adoption. Do I have a motion to read the resolution? And approve?
I'll move to read the resolution for CUP, what is it? Four oh eight? And read for approval?
Okay, thank you. Conditional use permit four zero eight, resolution number PC two zero two one dash six. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Camarillo, California, approving a request by Rite Aid for a conditional use permit for the sale of packaged beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption off-site under a type twenty-one general alcoholic beverage control license at two four zero zero Las Poses Road, Unit B, in the commercial plant development zone further described as CUP four zero eight.
And I'll make a motion that we waive further reading and vote for adoption.
Second.
Journey through the discussion on the item from the commission? Let's have a roll call vote for approval of the motion and the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Edsall?
Yes.
Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Approved.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Espinoza?
Yes.
Chairman Talmage?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the applicant for the information you provided.
Thank you for your time.
All right, now we move on to item number eight, which is a public hearing regarding RPD Residential Plan Development number one nine five, Lenar Homes of California Incorporated.
Thank you very much, Chairman Talmage. So Mr. McLaren's been doing such a great job this evening. We're gonna continue with having an additional presentation by Mr. McLaren on this.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, everybody can hear me okay and can see my screen? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. We are discussing RPD one ninety-five, Lenar Homes of California. The request is that the applicant requests approval of a residential plan development permit to allow for the construction of one hundred and fifty-eight for sale, single-family residence at a density of seven point eight units per acre. Additionally, the applicant is proposing the relocation of the historic Shoal House to a new location within the development where it will be rehabilitated and sold as a single-family residence. The project is located north of the one oh one freeway and west of Springville Drive on approximately forty-three acres of land. The Springville specific plan was approved on January ninth, two thousand and eight. This is part of the Springville specific plan. On November fourth, twenty twenty, the City Council approved a number of actions related to the project, including a general plan amendment, a zone change, a specific plan amendment, and also a modification to the previously approved tract map. The general plan amendment repurposed the land use to create the low-medium density residential as shown on the slide. This is approximately twenty-three acres where the homes will be built. And the zone change rezoned the area where the homes will be built to RPD eight U. The current site is a vacant land. It is north of the one oh one freeway, west of Springville Drive. The overall project, the forty-three acres, includes open space and the future park and the remaining And the remaining 23 acres will be where the actual housing development will occur. To the west of the site, we have farmland with a windrow of eucalyptus trees between that will remain between the farmland and the development. South of the 101 freeway, we have vacant industrial land. East of the development, there is vacant land that is still part of the Springville specific plan that is going to be commercial mixed use. And then north of the project, we have residential zoning, both rural exclusive and RPD 2U. This is the proposed project conceptual landscape plan, but it shows a great layout of what the site is going to look like. So coming off of Springville Drive, you would be turning onto a new Ponderosa Drive that has been designed with a median down the center and landscaping and sidewalk on both sides. Off of Ponderosa Drive, you can get into the development through Street E and Street C. These are not the final street names. Those will be approved at city council. They're just street holders. These are private streets. And then within the development, there are Street A, Street B, and Street D. The development also does include the open space, the park. And then it does have recreational area and the area for the where the Shoal House will be relocated. When you turn on to Ponderosa, this is a rendering of what you could anticipate to see. So again, the sidewalks and near the side, the median down the middle, and then you'll be able to see the housing tract off to your left as you turn down the down the street. Once you turn in on Street C or Street E, you're going to this would be the street scape there. And then internally, this would be the street scape. So it's got a lot of diverse housing stock within. And so you got a diverse street scene. The breakdown of the unit types, predominantly 62 out of 158 units are going to be the largest units at four bedrooms with a loft and three bathrooms. And then the other units are all fairly comparable in size with four and three-bedroom units with even mix of about 30-ish, 30-plus units of each of the other three types. The units are proposed in clusters of four and six. A four-unit cluster is has a the private street here with a private drive, shared driveway coming in that's 24 feet wide. It's got decorative paving at the approach and then colored concrete on the inside. Each one of the units itself, each one of the lots itself, has got its own little yard area. And then on the street side, the front yard setbacks are 13 feet and 10 feet. And then the setbacks elsewhere are five feet. Each unit within the four-unit cluster has a two-car garage as well as two spaces, two vehicles that can park in the driveway off the shared parking drive. The six-unit clusters are similar. They also all have their own little yard space. The front yard setbacks are 13 feet and 10 feet again. They have the common shared driveway with the decorative approach. The setbacks on the other units are five feet. The Plan 2 units are in the center of each one of the six-unit clusters. And these Plan 2 units are they instead of having two driveway parking spaces, they only have one driveway parking space. So the project is in a specific plan, Springville specific plan, which is also in the heritage zone. So as part of the design guidelines for the specific plan and the heritage zone, you have four different architectural styles that can be done, Spanish Colonial, Monterey, Mission, and Craftsman. And so I'm going to go through each of the different architectural styles one by one. So this is the Spanish Colonial style. You can see this line here shows where there's going to be a block wall. So you can see on on different elevations where it's showing where the block wall will be. So you'll actually know what the elevation looks like. The front yard elevations, they've got great articulation. They've got Spanish tile roofs. The Heritage Zone calls for jewel-toned accents. So we've got some nice jewel-toned shutters here. And then just different different decorative features. This is the Plan 2. On the Plan 2 in the front, this window has actually a tile element that goes around it to give it a nice pop of color there, the nice colonnaded front porch. This right elevation, I know it tends to look a little bit bare, but keep in mind that this is a Plan 2, which is in the middle of the six-unit clusters. So this plan is never going to be, you know, facing a street. And if there is any elevation ever that's not facing the street, there is a condition of approval that the director has the ability to ask for additional embellishments on those facades facing the street. The guard multiple color schemes for each of the different styles. So this is just a different color scheme with, you know, it's still got, you know, the nice articulation. There also is a condition of approval on the gabled ends for the Spanish Colonial that they have full-barrel Spanish tile so that it'll give a little bit more interest on the gabled ends. And they've also added this water foil or some sort of architectural detail here. Again, the left elevation is not ever going to be facing the street. They've got the nice tile around the window. Here are the color schemes. So it's showing what the accent tile on the Spanish style will be, Spanish Colonial, the accent colors. Then we move on to the Monterey style. The Monterey style has the tile roofs still. It's got stucco sides, stone wainscoting or brick. It's got some siding added in for some differences, some some change in textures. The main feature of the Monterey is the second door, second story porch. So that's going to be on most of the side or most of these plans. Again, different color scheme for the Monterey style, the front porch is here, some nice details over the garage. The roof lines have provide interest, and then there's pops of color by adding wrought iron under the windows and the shutters, of course. Or the same, just a different elevation, different group of elevations. And then this is the last one for that plan. Now, again, they're putting in some nice pops of color here and there with wrought iron. So these are the different colors, throwing in the brick here. And the brick here, and then the main accent color of the blue here. The Mission Plan, Mission Style tends to be a little bit less detailing and more about openings and the details around the openings. So in this case, we get nice arched windows. Here, this wall was a little blank, so they went ahead and put in some faux windows that kind of provide the same arch so that the wall doesn't look, you know, so it's not so blank. They've got the nice balcony here. Again, tile roofs. They've added this cornice element around to wrap around the house to give some detail. Put in the faux window here also so the wall doesn't look as blank. Nice windows here with the cornice detail. And then the accent colors are in this rustic red and then the regatta, which is sort of a bluish green. And the Craftsman is actually only three versions of Craftsman style. Craftsman style has got the stone wainscoting. It's got the Craftsman style pillars, exposed corbels, siding and stucco. In this case, the roofs are flat tile, but it is still tile. Got the nice corbels showing here, nice elements over the garage. And in the garage, they've added the windows into the garage doors as well. This one's got a bit more siding, but the siding is a nice color that contrasts with the stucco. And then these are the accent colors. So we're getting in the stone and the brick. And then this fiery brown for main accent. And then, you know, the siding also brings a good pop of color to the to the architecture. The maximum building height in this RPD zone is 25 feet unless an increase is established by the planning commission through this RPD. This project is consisting of two-story units that have varying heights from 25 feet, 1 inch to 29 feet, 7 inches, which makes the units able to have marketable nine-foot ceilings. Allows the architectural styles to benefit from increased heights by providing appropriately sloped roofs and architectural features. The variation height will also break up the roof lines when the property is viewed from a distance. And the proposed height is consistent with similar dwellings that are constructed within the Springville specific plan that were approved up to 28 feet in height. The Springville specifically plan requires two parking spaces per unit and then attached two-car enclosed garage access from a shared driveway. Additionally, Plans 1, 3, and 4 are providing 20-foot-long driveways that can accommodate two vehicles in front of the garages. And Plan 2 will provide one 20-foot-long driveway in front of the garage. Parking is also permitted in the zone in this neighborhood on the local streets within the development to allow for additional guest parking. Connectivity off of C Street and B Street, there's this little cul-de-sac area, which will actually have a paved street going down to this turnout. The from the development can, the residents of the development can exit through this street. But they will have to go through a gate that is, you know, as they drive up, it will open for them. But that is a one-way gate. They cannot re-enter this. It's fire access only for re-entering. But as a this to create this connectivity, the developer is also going to be paving daily drive all the way down to Central Avenue and also be providing a bike path along that paved drive. Internally, there's a lot of green space. There will be landscaping plans for the streets as well as the front yards. Additionally, there's a nice strip of green space here where there is an elevation change, and that's going to create some nice separation between these four-unit clusters as well as some height difference between the four-unit clusters. And then additionally, they've added this green space in here, which is a nice connective path that will allow residents that live in this area to be able to walk through instead of all the way around to get to the recreational area that's down here. And then so that path comes out here, and then it goes past this lot, which is the 0.3-acre Shoal House, which will also be landscaped and will have a brand-new two-car garage built. And then there's the recreational area, which has got the pool. They've added the detention basin, worked it into the landscaping, and they added a little bit of a rec building here. And then over here, we have the the new park that will be being built. Additionally, to the north of the property is some open space, and that open space currently has this trail, which is actually an easement for a utility. It can also be used as a maintenance road for that utility. But this trail will be available as a walking path for the residents, and the developer will be adding seating and shade structures as a condition of approval 154 to this. And it ends up here on the hillside where is a great scenic view or scenic overlook. And then down here in this area, this shows how the development is going to connect that path to the development off of Ponderosa. This public hearing was advertised. The notices were mailed to all property owners within a 600-foot radius of the site. Staff also sent the notices to nearby HOAs and interested parties. Notice was published in the Camarillo Acorn. It was also posted at City Hall and on the city's website, and assigned advertising the hearing was posted at the subject site. On November 4 of 2020, the city council certified and adopted a supplemental environmental impact report to environment to the original environmental impact report for the Springville specific plan. The project's impacts through this supplemental environmental impact report after incorporating the mitigation measures are in accordance with the adopted mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The proposed project has been evaluated and is found to be consistent with recent approvals of general talent plan amendment, the amendment to the Springville specific plan, and the zone change. The land use is designated for low-medium residential density of 5.1 to 10 dwelling units per acre and is zoned RPD 8 units, providing a density of 7.8 dwelling units per acre. The project has been analyzed with conformance to the general plan goals, the Springville specific plan, the Heritage Zone design guidelines, and the RPD zoning. And the developer has presented a project that has given careful consideration to and designed a community that meets the circulation, noise, open space, housing, historic preservation requirements of the general plan. Staff recommends approval of RPD 195, subject to the conditions of approval. And the action of the planning commission is final unless it is appealed within appeal is filed within 10 days of the date of the action. And with that, my presentation is over. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I would ask if the any of the planning commissioners have any questions of staff? Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, thank you Chairman Talmage. Few questions here. On the fire access on the southwest corner, is that so there'll be a gate that will be activated by loop detection, I guess, for vehicle traffic? Will will cyclists be able to get through that gate and pedestrians for that matter so that the residents can access daily drive secondary?
We haven't gotten into the specific details of that gate, but certainly it would be something that we could ask for, that they provide pedestrian and bicycle access through that gate. I think that would be a great add to the project.
Yeah, I think it would be important to the to the residents of that community. Number two, when I was looking at the
Um, yes. This is Jackie Lee, principal planner. Sorry for butting in right now, but I just wanted to clarify that the bike path will continue along the berm. So there will be a bike path that will connect from central to the project site that will be installed as part of this project while they're putting in the fire lane. But this project also has a bike path that will, I guess he's going to the site plan so he can show you, that will go along the berm and then up to the east of the park and then connects to Ponderosa.
Well, that bike path, again, down near the gate area where the access is on to daily drive as daily drive goes westerly, the will the adjoining bike path be at the same level? I mean, or?
Yes, yes, the bike path will be pretty much adjacent to that fire lane.
Right. So yeah.
And the the fire access gate is intended only for emergency exit of this development to be able to have a secondary point of egress. But the fire department will be able to have access in in both directions.
Okay. Will the gate only be activated in at times of emergency?
No, no. So although the intent is for emergency purposes, it will be activated if there's a vehicle that, you know, is on the sensor on in the pavement. It will open.
Okay. All right. So yeah, if if pedestrian and cycling access through that gate could be provided without compromising the intent of of the emergency access, that that would certainly benefit the residents who live in the southwesterly portion of this community.
Sure, we can definitely look at that.
Then in looking at this project site plan on Plan 4, I understand that Plan 4 has a two-parking space driveway, 20-foot-long two-space driveway. And looking at this plan, they look a little bit thin, but I know that this is just a schematic. It's not to scale. And looking at the cluster drawings, the A5.0, there's a fully dimensioned representation of the clusters as individuals. And I just wanted to confirm that the city staff has reviewed a a full comprehensive, dimensioned plan that demonstrates that everything fits for the overall site.
Yes, we have. Yeah. So both with the tentative tract map. And there's a exhibit for the tentative tract map that actually shows each one of these units on the lots that they're going to be on, and that tentative tract map showed that everything does fit.
Okay. Third question has to do with the the pathway that goes up through the utility easement in the open space area. And again, I just wanted to confirm that that condition 154 doesn't designate where the shade structure and benches. Are there multiple shade structure and benches, or is it just one? It's question 1A. Or, yeah.
So the deep the details of where exactly all of that stuff is going to go is going to have both be worked out with the city, the developer. So the deep, the details of where exactly all of that stuff is gonna go is gonna have both be worked out with the city, the developer, and the easement holder as well. To make sure that it doesn't conflict with their ability to access the easement. So those specific details of where those shade structures are gonna be and where the seating is gonna be is still something that is pending. But being that it is a condition of approval, we will be working with them to make sure that those seating areas and shade structure, structures are added to this walking path.
Okay, as my understanding and discussion with staff that the intent is to bring that shade structure and sitting area benches. Reasonably close to the top of the highest elevation point, or close to the highest elevation point. The intent is to create a vista point, is that correct for, for, for this use?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. I think that's all I have, thank you.
Are there any other questions, Commissioner Edsel?
I had a couple of follow-up questions on that daily drive access from that private gate. Is daily drive, is it, is it all the way through now to central, or that's something that's gonna be completed with this project? To extend that red line there that you're showing?
Yeah, so that is going to be completed with this project, the developer will be paving that all the way through to central.
Okay, so that, when the houses are done, that'll be done then too, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then. On this project, is there, I didn't hear any comments on it, but is, was the advantage, did the developer take advantage of any density bonus? Or is there any low-cost component of, of any of these units within the project?
Jackie, do you want to take that one? Or would you like me to take it?
Um, sure, so they, they did not request for any concessions or density bonuses within this development. However, they do comply with the overall specific plan requirement for affordable units. Which is being fulfilled, or which has already been fulfilled with the Springville seniors apartment project to the east.
Okay, that, yeah, thank you. And then, you know, there was in the report, they talked about that SB 330 that we talked about the other day where there's a state moratorium on our 400 unit. A year that, that Camarillo's ordinance until 2025. And on this one, I, you know, I don't know if we exceed that in a year, this is definitely less than that, but does that? We used to do an evaluation for point system to see who was eligible. Because of that ordinance, are we, are we not gonna do that on, on this project or other projects until 2025?
That's correct, we, we aren't able to do that on this project or other projects until 2025. And it is possible that they may even extend that deadline, or that, that. The, the sun, the sunsetting of that, it might extend the sunset period.
It seems like the safeguard we have is we still have the architectural review committee that extended the details of these, which I think that point system. Kinda did, did as well, I, the designs on these I actually thought were, were well-done, so. Anyway, that's all, oh, oh, the one, one other question was. There, there's a common area pool and stuff, so I assume there's gonna be an HOA, but is it gonna, you know, cover like some projects do roofing and exterior of the building? Or is it just gonna be set up for the common areas?
So since this is a subdivision with individual lots, everything that's within the bounds of the lot, except for landscape maintenance perhaps. Will be, or front yard landscape maintenance, I should say, will end up being on the homeowner. But then everything outside of those lot boundaries will be cared for and maintained by an HOA. To include the private streets within the development and even the open space area.
Okay, then they probably don't have any idea what those, the HOA would, would be at this point, would they?
What the fees would be, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I don't know if Ben has the ability to answer that question or not, Ben O'Neil is with Lennar Homes. I don't know if they've done any evaluation to that yet, they haven't drafted the CCNRs yet either. So that also may affect what the HOA dues are based on the full extent of what the CCNRs say are the HOA's responsibility. But Ben, if you want to address that.
Yeah, sure, absolutely can, we did look at it before we, you know, purchased the project when we were just forward planning, you know, a year or two ago. Projects of this type with this kind of HOA, what the HOA will be maintaining. Typically, you'd see these in the, probably the $250 to $300 range. We had, we had an initial estimate that was closer to 200, but I think some of the details on the project weren't quite vetted out at that point. So if you want to call an average right now, probably around $250 is probably the, the average amount for HOA dues. But it'll, we have to kinda create that budget and determine that as we go, as we go along.
Yeah, thank you, that, that's helpful, thank you, and that's all the questions I had at this time, Chair.
Are there any other questions from the? Commission, Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Thank you. Kinda tagging on to Commissioner Murphy as far as, just wanna see if I'm on the same wavelength with everybody when we're talking about. Bike access through the fire gate, exit gate. So that we would be able to have, if, if we could do it, it'd be nice to have bicycle and pedestrian access at that point. So that people wouldn't have to, if they live on that west end of the development. They wouldn't have to take the bike path all the way around to the east end to get back to where they want to go. Is that what, am I understanding that right, is what we were asking for?
Yes, that's what I've written down, that's what we'll be including in our future discussions with Lennar.
Okay, next on the area, the open area to the north of the development where the trail goes up the hill. Is that still open to the public?
Yes, that will be open to the public still.
So the HOA will have to maintain that area and the, the path and the sitting areas, the canopies or whatever. Even though it's gonna be open to the public to use and have additional wear and tear possibly on it.
Yeah, so the HOA will be responsible for maintaining any furniture or shade structures that are installed. The specifics of who's going to actually maintain the paving and that sort of thing, I think is still gonna be. It may require that there be some sort of a maintenance agreement between the utility easement holder and the developer. But that's still something that would need to be discussed and would be included in the CCNRs as to who specifically is going to maintain that path.
Okay, yeah, I, I am a little concerned on this, the HOAs with all the impact. Or the financial obligations that I'm reading to go with it from the streets, the storm drains, the recreation center, the landscaping irrigation. Street sweeping. The daily drive maintaining that, which hopefully, a lot of this will be in reserve funds, but a lot of it will also be operational annual budget money. It just seems like a lot to put on an HOA of that amount of homes to go with into it. So I'll be kind of anxious to see kind of what they turn out, what they end up with the HOA amount on that. And as far as the, the units themselves, I have, basically, I like the, the design, the colors. My two concerns are that, in all the models are, except one. The living gathering area seems kind of small for the amount of occupancy that you could have in the houses, based on the number of bedrooms. And then I also have some concern on the garages and driveways across from each other. Where one side will be able to back out at a time, you won't be able to have two cars backing out from each direction from each side. So. Um, those are my two concerns with the, my only two concerns with the construction units themselves. But. Yeah, I went out and measured our street here, knowing how. We have a little bit more room and just seeing how it would work with the cars backing out, so. I think it's gonna be a little tight at times. But that's, I think that's all that I had on this. Right now, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission, Commissioner Espinoza?
Okay, I have a few questions, I wanted to start by asking. Staff, if, if there's a standard for the single-family lot. As far as the footprint of the residence itself and yard space. Or if there's similar developments that are of this size, of this footprint and of this limited yard size.
Um, Jackie, I think.
Yeah, I can respond to that, there is no maximum building footprint in the specific plan. The lot size is established by the planning commission, which was approved when the tentative tract map, or by the city council, I should say. When the tentative tract map was approved. The setbacks, which Paul had gone through earlier in his presentation, those are established through the RPD permit. Which shows a minimum of 10 feet between units. And also establishes the areas for private yards. So that's what we're looking at right here, but there is no maximum building footprint. Um, in the specific plan or the zoning code. And the setbacks are just established as part of the approval for the development permit. We do have similar projects in Springville that are like this, where they're kind of a cluster development. Those were developed by Comstock, and those are over near Melvinson Park. And they have. I believe they have six units per, per cluster. And they have similar yards where it is a compact development. And they do have smaller yards in each of those lots. And it would be very similar to how those function.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I noticed that the, the yard space definitely is, is limited, I think that the, the homes themselves are typical of. Subdivisions like this, but the yards were quite small. And I know they added 15 units, I think, to this particular part of the Springville area. Uh, so. And I suppose the demand would be there for these residents regardless of the limited yard space. But they, it seems to kind of give the environmental feel of a multifamily residential almost because of the. You know, you're gonna have limited parking, I think, you know, I, I assume that all those driveways are not gonna be. You won't be able to park there on the street itself because of the fire lane access, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay, and so you'd only be able to park on streets A through E as, as well as Ponderosa. If you're throwing a party and you're having a number of guests over. And that's gonna be their options as far as a parking goes, and, and of course, there's some spaces near the rec area and the park as well. But I think that. You know, it does sort of have that condensed feel to, in, in looking at that. And I wanted to ask if. As far as the, the grading goes, that all drains down, everything drains down to the, towards the freeway. Into those detention basins, is that, how are those gonna actually function? Can you answer that? On, on runoff and, and. Water runoff and drainage.
Right. So. Ben, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself.
Sure, yeah, I didn't want to step in there in case you were gonna answer, Paul. But yeah, these are, these are designed as retention basins. So the idea is that, like any project really across Southern California. You have to capture all of the stormwater runoff that is landing on your site. And since a lot of this is no longer gonna be agricultural land, we have to build these basins big enough to handle certain, you know, water flow, stormwater flow. In high rains or, 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 or any, or any kind of condition. And so the berms, I'm sorry, the detention basins are sized appropriately, essentially to retake, take in the water, slow it down. And then not overwhelm the, the larger storm drain system as it goes, there's actually gonna be a storm drain pipe that goes through the berm, under the berm that you don't see. So that, yeah.
So, so the runoff will eventually make it into, into storm drainage. Okay, got it. And the fire access, bro, they talked about that. Who, there wouldn't be anybody on site that would actually be able to secure that gate. Open if it was actually used as an emergency exit or evacuation or whatnot. The, if somebody drives out, it's gonna reclose automatically, right? And other than the fire department maybe having a knox box key to be able to hold the gate open. There wouldn't be anybody on site that could do that for the residents that might want to leave.
No, there, there would not be, however, if you, if it is an emergency situation, there's going to be a continuous line of cars trying to get out that way, most likely. And the continuous line of cars would be automatically activating the sensors where the gate wouldn't really have the ability to close.
Okay, yeah, as long, as long as there's cars that hit the sensors before that happens.
Right.
Cause, yeah, that, and. It's just something to consider there as far as how that's actually gonna function in real world. And whether or not also that that might be something that residents that get keen to knowing that, 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 that's there and want to bypass freeway traffic. Might tend to drive through a neighborhood and use that as an alternate pathway. Is there, I didn't see any rendition of the Sholley House. Is, as far as what it might look like in its rehabilitated state. I understand whoever might purchase that might choose to upgrade and do more, but. I assume it's all gonna be brought up to a safety standard and code. If and when it gets moved.
So Dennis, Dennis Hargrave is dealing with the, the Sholley House for Lennar, and he's available on the call also, and I think he would like to speak to that. Okay.
Good evening, Commissioner and, Commissioner and Chair, Dennis Hargrave. And when we come to the, actually opening of the public hearing, we'll make some further comments, but. And I'll reserve some of these responses till then, but directly related to the Sholley House. While Lennar is building the homes and developing the site. The Ran Rancho owners have me in charge of getting the house restored, moved to its new location. And then sold in the future, but it will be, the exterior will be a restored version of what it would have been. Lack of a better term, probably in the 1930s or 40s, so that'll be the, the finish on the, on the Sholley House.
Thanks, yeah, it seems like that might actually be a desirable home for somebody because of, it's gonna be a third of an acre, it looks like.
Yeah, it's gonna have the best yard in the neighborhood, so that's great.
Okay. Um, but anyway, that's all I have for right now, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the commission of staff? Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes, I just had one more that I remembered from my notes, there was a comment in the conditions. That there may not be enough local schools to accommodate the number of children that could be in here. How far away might the children have to go to go to school?
That is a condition that the, the school district asks us to include, but they would still be attending the Pleasant Valley Elementary School District. It's just a matter of where they have capacity for those students to attend.
Okay, so it could be anywhere within Camarillo and that school district?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions by the commission? If not, I, I have a few questions of staff. First off. I think we talked about the impact of. Uh, first off, um, I think we talked about the uh impact of Senate Bill three thirty. And the four hundred units per year that um normally is the case for Camarillo. That that is now held in abeyance until uh twenty um. Twenty twenty five, January first. Um, so does that mean that uh in theory? The developer here could apply for all all of the homes at once. And the city would be bound to say yes. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Um, I haven't seen or heard anything about sound attenuation in the units. Uh, there's reference to the berm, which is on the south side of the development uh facing the freeway. But is there any additional? Uh, design criteria for sound attenuation within the unit from the freeway noise and the airport?
Yeah, so because this is in the airport um area, there also are going to be requirements that include double pane windows. Um, and other requirements like that in order to um help with the sound attenuation.
Is there any additional insulation in the walls for sound attenuation?
We haven't gotten to that level of uh the of the plan detail, but um Ben, if you'd like to speak to that one.
Yeah, sure, I can speak to that one. Um, Chairman, we we usually will do or we always do when we're this close to either a freeway. Or an airport or really any source of, you know, that kind of noise or railroad uh tracks. We always do a noise study, whether whether, you know, planning commission or city council requires it or conditions it. Just something we like to do to understand, you know, a addition to perhaps uh double pane windows. You know, we'll look at the insulation as well. Um, so we'll kind of take our own study and make sure that. We're not setting up our residents, our future residents for, you know, problems and calling us after day two of moving in. So we usually follow our follow our own sound uh uh sound noise analysis, excuse me.
Mm-hmm. Um, sort of a follow-up question to that. Uh, are the windows in the units openable? Or are they all fixed windows and the uh occupant has to rely on uh central heating, air conditioning?
All all of the windows are one hundred percent operable. Uh, there's, yeah.
All right, good. That's that's a good green move, so you don't have to run off the electricity. All right. Um, I'm also concerned about the fire ingress egress uh on the southwest corner. Um, we've we've talked a bit about it and uh my concern is that um. I'm glad to hear that the obviously the residents uh have a means of getting out. But I am concerned about uh that gate constantly opening, closing, opening, closing. Once people find out that, hey, all I have to do is drive over here and the gate opens. And I don't know what the answer is, but I certainly, if I lived in that southwest corner, I'd find out right away that I could get out of there. And I don't have to go all the way back up to Ponderosa and then to Spring umville and then down some other way. I would zip right out, get to Central and be on my way if I was headed towards Ventura. But anyway. Um, I'll just leave it that and I do have concern about um that access. Um, that it should be secured, it should it need it needs to be available for emergencies, no question. And and I like the comments that were made about having pedestrian and bicycle traffic be able to go around that gate. And it seems to me in looking at the the site plan that's on um. On the screen right now, that a small trail that kind of goes around the side of that gate could work. And and provide that that means of uh ingress egress for pedestrians and for bicyclists and whatnot. So I think that ought to be taken into consideration. Um, question more of technicality. Um, it was indicated in the presentation that we have a height variance on these units. Um, varying anywhere from one inch to four feet uh above what is a normal standard for these kinds of houses. Is that specific in the conditions and because the comment was made that it needs to be an approval by. The planning commission. So is our approval of the project, the RPD. Does that imply that we agree with the increase in height of the building? Or is there needs to be a separate finding saying that? So it's more a.
Yeah, so so the the approval of the RPD will be approving the plan that was presented, which includes the varying heights.
Okay, fine, all right. So we don't have to make a separate finding on that?
No.
Okay, um. This is a, I think, a general comment for uh mostly for the um applicant. Um, we haven't really heard, maybe I'll hold off on this question until um we have comments uh by the applicant. So I'll leave it at that for now and and ask again, are there any questions on the uh planning commission of staff? All right, with that said, uh it's time to open the public testimony. On uh this particular um agenda item, so. Public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment?
Actually, I think we have the presentation by the applicant first.
Oh, very well. Let's do that. Okay, I I appreciate Mr. Hargrave. Thank you for your correction.
Sure, sure, I yeah, apologize for that, Chairman Thomas.
Yeah, that's all right.
Uh, I'm Dennis Hargrave and as uh you recall from our November hearings on the project. For the general plan amendment, the zone change, the specific plan amendment and approval of the tentative track map. Uh, that was the uh that was the approval that took place uh in November. And it actually established the lot configurations that you're looking at tonight. So this is an approved tentative track map. Tonight's hearing is, uh as staff has done a great job presenting it, the uh. The RPD, which is the residential plan development permit and exactly as uh you've just stated. It will approve the architecture, it will approve the height variance, which is minimal. And is very common because of Camaro's architectural standards, particularly in a heritage zone. We wind up uh to get the character of the architecture, it has to normally be a few feet taller, even in a two-story home. Uh, to accomplish what we want to do with the character of the homes. So I just wanna. Just as an overview, say, I represent Ran Rancho, who are the owners originally of the property. And while we couldn't say it at the public hearing at the time in November, uh we have closed Estro and Lennar Homes is now the owner of the property. Um, we're really excited about what they've done. They've worked very closely with Mr. McLaren and Jackie and the rest of the planning staff. And have come up with a uh really excellent uh improvement over the architecture that we had submitted with the project initially. And KTGY, the architects have done a great job. Uh, in a few moments, Ben O'Neil will represent Lennar uh as the owner. And I'd like to address a couple of things that came up so far that might be best addressed since we did all the site planning for the site. And we'll leave Ben to talk about the exciting stuff about the architecture and the community as it goes forward. First of all, um and I'll try to kind of get these sequentially as I took them down in my notes. First of all, uh we think it makes perfect sense and we always intended that the bike path would have a connection out of that southwest corner. Uh, it's easy to work around a knox box gate arm to get a pedestrian and a bike crossing. You just have to make sure you've designed it with bollards or whatever it is so that uh vehicles can't go around the gate. So I don't see any problem in that getting in the public works plan, so I think that's a pretty easy fix. And as uh as Ms. Lee stated in her present in her comments, it is at the same grade. The bike path and the cul-de-sac right there are all at the same grade. And the intent, as you may recall from the from the hearing on the project overall, not only will this bike path go up. To uh Springville Drive and Ponderosa, but it's our intent to try to incorporate it going east. Um, along the berm on the south between the berm and the freeway uh in that larger area shown on this exhibit. Where it says Springville specific plan. So we hope to create a pretty long loop in here for the bike path. So I think that should address that issue. Be glad to answer any questions. The Vista Point, interestingly, when you look at that, um is a currently paved. Uh roadway that goes all the way up to the top of the hill. It does not connect to Camino Tierra Santa. There's one private property there, so it is, we're unable to punch it out to Camino Tierra Santa. But it's very close to almost being across the street from the tennis courts on the park up in Spanish Hills. Uh, but that's that Vista Point, we do see that there's a location that would work with the easement holders. To be able to put one covered bench and with a shade structure over it on a bench. That was the intent there uh so that people would have a great view. And it is a terrific view of the Channel Islands and Point Magoo. And uh really a great location, so a good adjunct to have uh in that area in terms of a walking area. There is an active Oxnard City and Caiaguas Municipal Water District mainline that runs in that road, so that's why that's there. Additionally, the city of Ventura quite likely is going to add another water pipe in that road eventually. Uh, they have an EIR that was certified for that and uh so their intent is to also access. If you look up right above in that in the image you're looking at right now, if you see a large square. Uh tan area north of Track fifty-six seventy-one project site, there's a square up there. That's a very large Caiaguas, yes, Caiaguas Municipal Water District uh regional reservoir. And that's where the city of Oxnard and potentially the city of Ventura will draw water from Caiaguas to get some of their. Um, MWD feed that comes to serve them with water. So the Vista Point is intended to be a single bench structure, not a large gathering place with. With picnic tables and things, but that was the condition, the park district and the city uh we all agreed on. Uh, in terms of cars backing out to address a question that came up. First of all, this product type, I would tell you is what I consider an upgrade and an improvement over a very successful product. That we designed at Village at the Park. If you know where Village Commons Boulevard is, the one that has the divided boulevard. Um, this is very similar to what's called Camden at Village at the Park. And the houses live on these shared auto courts. And the improvement here is that we not only have the auto court, but we also have driveway aprons on everyone. So in answer to the question of backing out simultaneously, this is kind of like living on a common court with somebody else. Where you understand your neighbors and you know what's going on. And that it is as large as a drive aisle in a shopping center. So in terms of backing out, the problem of backing out should not be a problem here. And uh and the parking aprons are a huge improvement that they've increased the parking. One thing to point out that Lennar has done, when you look exactly at this plan right here, this view that's up right now. Is you'll notice that the plan fours, as opposed to what we had on the track map, we had. I believe one parking space on that apron in the plan fours before. We've now doubled that by adding a second apron in everyone. So in effect, we now have sixty-two additional. What I'd call temporary or guest parking spaces in the project. And you don't have the tentative track map in front of you, but the tentative track map that you did approve or you recommended. And the city council approved, at that time, the requirement for the overall project was five hundred and thirty-eight spaces. And this project, as approved, had six hundred and thirty-four. This by adding sixty-two more of these at the plan fours, this project now has six hundred and ninety-eight parking spaces. Uh, including garages, driveway aprons and a lot of on-street parking because the streets are thirty-six feet wide. And allow parking on both sides of the street. So we have a hundred and sixty spaces more than the code requires for this project. No other project in Springville is even close to that, so uh I I don't. And that does not include any park parking as well. So the park has its own parking area on their side of the street. So I'm very comfortable that we want to have parking issues when it comes to this site. Um, fourth comment about the um yards, also, this is very similar in terms of private space. With the Camden project, so it's very similar. What makes Camden and these kinds of projects successful? Is when you have a community recreation facility like we designed into this project. And also at the other Village at the Park projects. Unlike uh Comstock's courtyard homes, they do not have a shared recreation pool. So those people have a common, our private area that's similar to what we have here, but no common rec facility. And in this case, we have not only the public park similar to what they have at Comstock, but we also have a private recreation amenity. So we feel like we fully fulfill and meet what would be really exceptional marking marketing value for homeowners. Looking for quite likely the last opportunity to buy a single-family detached home in Camarillo. We don't see anything else on the horizon that will be a detached home. Uh, and part of that, when you mentioned these small yards, I will always get on my uh my soapbox for this. We all collectively decided that SOR was a good idea for Ventura County. And as a result, we won't see five thousand square foot lots and six thousand square foot lots anymore, much less half acres. So to be able to generate an opportunity for people to buy a home with a little private yard. This is really the direction Ventura County is uh put in to go towards. So uh not a bad idea. I think it's appropriate for how a lot of people live now, but that's the planning concept behind what we did. And just the last con- comment I think I'd make based on what I heard and then I'll give it over to Ben. I apologize for all this time is uh. That when one comment was made that we increased the density by fifteen units in this. In actuality, we added fifteen of these units, but we removed all the townhomes. So this is, as you recall from the general plan amendment, we reduced the density of this area west of Springville. And that's why it had such strong support from both the commission and the council. So we feel like we've uh maximized this. Kept the community livable, made it extremely walkable, netted the amenities that make sense. And that was the logic behind the uh approval of the specific plan amendment, we feel like. And again, worked with staff for probably four years to really dial this in. And Lennar's done nothing but improve it by uh refining the architecture. With that, I'm done. Uh, let Ben make his presentation and if you have any questions for me afterwards, be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrave. I guess we turn it over to uh. Who's it, Mr. O'Neil?
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, uh fellow planning commissioners and Dennis. Thanks for thanks for introducing me. Uh, you heard my voice a few times. I am the representative and the project manager for Lennar. So not only am I working with Jackie and Paul and staff and Dennis up here on the front end. But I'll kind of be, I will be the the linchpin or the person that you can't really get rid of until this project is fully sold out. I will also be on the HOA board, so I will be on this project, working on this project. Uh, and I will remember remember all your comments and questions so that we, you know, really can deliver an awesome project. That's really our goal here. Um, just a kind of a continuation of what has already been done. Just I wanted to give you guys just a real high level, these things can change, of course, dates, but just a real high level timeline of of where things are. You know, you might wonder, well, how long is this whole thing gonna take? These are projections. But right now, our plans are in for uh our improvement plans, the subdivision improvement plans are in for Plan Check. We're getting through Public Works and and all the other departments there. So we expect the final map and the improvement plans to be approved. I kind of have late summer here of this year, uh or maybe early fall. And then we'll start the site work. Um, so from roughly September of this year till about July of next year. We'll be grading sewer, water, storm drain, uh building the berm. You know, you'll see Ponderosa start taking the shape. All that, all that fun fun stuff will happen. And then we intend to grand open or sorry, start our models next July with a grand opening of um a year from this December. Uh, and then as we start um clo- you know, building and closing the production homes, the rest of the homes. Um, after the models, we right now are projecting roughly like a twenty-four month total build out. So that's our that's our rough timeline for right now on the project. And then this is our team. Um, we're KTGY as the architect. They've done a great job um to date so far. They're gonna, we're gonna be launching off into CDs soon here. Uh, Jensen is the civil engineer. Uh, we're using LA Group as our landscape architect. Gorian is our geotechnical engineer and there. And then Dennis, of course, with Development Planning Services. Dennis is a is a great resource to have uh on the project. Uh, and for his, you know, just his knowledge and history of Kiff Camarillo. And then you've seen this several times. Um, this is our site plan. Um, it does follow the tentative map as as Dennis mentioned and as Paul mentioned. Um, I think some of the really cool elements that we're including here, of course, are the five acre park. Um, I think some of the really cool elements that we're including here, of course, are the five acre park. Um, two and a half acres roughly of turf uh to the, on the northern side. And then the southern half is, you know, really activated by a bunch of different sports. And there's also a little dog park here um kind of on the south side. And then, of course, the rec center that's private just for the use of the residents. Um, that, as Dennis mentioned, is a really nice amenity to have, especially when you kind of have the separation of Springville. You know, this community is over here to the west on their own, so it's nice to have all of these elements built in uh to the project. And then um as we um, you've seen this already. Um, the typical four-pack uh cluster is is has a plan one, a plan three and two four, two plan fours at the back. And the driveway width is twenty-four feet wide. Um, I was looking at the the Comstock project and I believe those sit, those little clusters might be to have twenty-foot wide driveways. So yeah, we do have a nice little healthy amount here and there will be uh an actual rolled curb and then and a um vertical curve in places when you don't have the driveway. So really will be kind of a, an area where you, you feel like it's a street, you know, so maybe that encourages people to act as if they're on the street and make sure they're looking behind them. Here's your typical six-pack. Um, as uh, as Paul noted, the plan twos are really, you know, it's a four-pack with plan twos nudged into into the middle. And then I've just brought up here just images that you've already seen, but these are our four architectural styles. Um, and that we have, I think, right now, two, at least two color schemes per style. And that's something too. I mean, when it comes to colors, we can certainly add to that, change it, modify it, but we've, we've worked um uh, we've worked on, you know, we've gone back and forth through the iterative process with with Jackie and Paul. And so this is where we've come up with so far, but we're happy to add or 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 revise if if needed. And then just um the plan, as we step up here, I'll just quickly jump through the four plans, but I don't want to spend too much time on them. But essentially, you know, uh, we like to segment the product from, you know, plan one, two, three, four, offer slightly different things. Obviously, these are, these range in size from just over two thousand square feet to uh, I think about twenty-four hundred. So, you know, there's not a drastic difference here in square footage. They're all fairly similar, but we try to just differentiate a little bit. So that there is a product segmentation and different folks might, something might appeal to somebody, some, somebody, one thing might appeal to somebody else. Um, the plan one, twos and threes um are 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 fairly similar. I want to just point out the plan four. One nice thing here is we've added, there's a downstairs bedroom. The other plan types do not have a downstairs bedroom, but we think and there's the plan fours are um, thi- this is the most heavily plotted plan type. And the reason is that we think this floor plan is the most flexible. Um, having that downstairs bedroom allows um you know, an extended family to kind of, you know, join or age in place here, or maybe this is a teenager or just a visitor. But it's nice to have this extra downstairs bedroom for guests or or whomever. And this is um a little bit of an update to the conceptual plan of the rec center. It's, we're, you're now viewing this to, you know, the opposite way. It's really oriented in the other direction, but um, because the, the, the project is, the main project is down here and one-on-one is up here. Every other pro, every other site plan we're looking at has it the other way, but uh, we intend to include a pool, a spa. There's a little restroom building which you kind of see here. We've picked up the Monterey style uh for the, for the um, for the rec building. And uh, and there's a little bit of a, you know, breezeway that you actually enter through. Um, showers out, outdoor showers out here. And then this little area out here is kind of a barbecue area, picnic tables, that kind of thing. So we've tried to kind of activate this whole little area and make it a nice little spot. There is no, there's no additional, you know, there's not a lounge space or a rentable area uh that's in, that's conditioned space. This is all just, you know, it's an outdoor rec area. And then we touched on this a little bit. Um, here's some of the details of the items that are included in the park. Um, as I mentioned, you know, prim, it's about two and a half acres of the northern half, which is turf. Uh, and then we've got a couple of different top lots of different, for different age groups. There's pickleball courts, um basketball courts, bocce courts. There is a um, a restroom building here similar to the Mel Vincent Park. Uh, there's a, there's a weight uh or not a weight area, excuse me, not, just a workout area, an exercise area over here. Uh, and then a dog park. So there's really a lot of different elements here. And then, of course, as we, as you all noted earlier, we discussed there is the bike path that runs along the public, public park and continues along uh to the west. And then you've also seen these images too. Um, just want to note what you're really looking here um for the uh on, on Ponderosa and really a lot of the perimeter um streets of the project are really what you see are actually the back of the plan fours. Um, so I wanted to bring up, oh, I will find out of the back of a, I think it's the right elevation of a plan four, the rear. Uh, perhaps when I'm complete here, we can bring it up. We added a lot to the, especially in particular to the second floors of those plan fours, specifically for the reason of it's the most visible uh elevation that you can see. So we want, we were very cognizant of that fact and tried to make sure that we um as well as staff was too. So we tried to, you know, work together to create a really nice look from the street. And this is from Ponderosa. And then this is uh an interior street. It happens to be Street B. Uh, and then this is another shot, actually kind of not that uh far western edge of Ponderosa and uh C Street, I believe it is, that comes down here. So. And before I turn it over to questions, I'll pull us back to the site plan and just real quick um address some of the items that that Dennis didn't necessarily get to. But just to, to make sure it's, you know, I heard you and that we're on, it's on our radar screen too. Um, the pedestrian and cyclist kind of entry here at this point. One thing to note, there is a little access point right here that we've created on this end where the berm ends on the eastern side. So that does exist for this area. But over here, um, several of the commissioners mentioned and chairman, you mentioned this as well. I see no issue as long as we have the room, of course, to create a little area here where you can walk around this gate or walk your bike around this gate. Um, it's not a gated community. It's not a, you know, you know, everybody's not securely behind gates here. This is this is obviously for an emergency access reason why this gate is even here to begin with. So I, I would see really no reason why we couldn't create a little path here. Um, because there, there isn't really the need to have, to create a gate because there really is no fence, fence here. It's just, just to block the roadway. So yeah, I do not see any issue with that. Um. Daily Drive over here, yes, this will be part of the um, of the development of the site, I think, as, as Paul had, had responded to. And the HOA dues, um Commissioner Vandermolen, you mentioned this a time or two. I mean, this is, this really is something that we're um, I wouldn't say put in the category, category of concerned about yet because we just don't know enough. But it is something that we really want to be cognizant of because you have a, you know, when you have a certain price point that you're targeting, you're also factoring in just the overall affordability of, well, you're also putting in for HOA dues. So we're gonna, this project has the ability where the front yards, we could have those maintained by the HOA. Uh, or we could leave those because these are detached lots. We could say, you know what? Each homeowner needs to maintain their own lot. So when we start to see the numbers for the HOA dues come in, that's where we can kind of pick and pull and say, okay, take this away from the HOA to try to lower the dues. Um, and now it's a homeowner obligation. One thing on the front yard is that we'd like to keep, it's nice when you can have the HOA maintained only because clearly then you get a uniform. Yes, it, it looks better. You get a uniform, you know, approach. Uh, but it is something, HOA dues are something we're really, you know, cognizant of. And then let's see here, uh, we talked about the garages and the driveway, or it's not, the driveway width, um sound attenuation. Uh, yeah, and then um, and then, you know, the fire access road, you know, at, we're we're certainly, I think this is kind of um certainly a topic and a discussion topic that Dennis and and Jackie and Paul and uh you guys probably know more about than I did. As I think the history of this project uh created the need for this emergency access gate. Maybe if it's, it's something that if we need to more information on, we ask the fire department about. Uh, but uh, but yeah, so we're, you know, we're conditioned to design, construct and maintain this road all the way to central. So, um, that is, you know, I can conclude my presentation and just turn it over to additional questions that you have. Perhaps I'll leave it here on the site plan or I can stop sharing and open things up for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Neil. Are there any questions of the applicant uh from the uh planning commission? Commissioner Vandermolen.
Just one quick one. On the, on the swimming pool, is it planned that that will be heated and usable all year round?
Yes, that is the plan. Uh, to what temperature? I don't know, but yes, that is the plan.
Eighty-four degrees. Rinse right in the test.
Yeah, and this is Dennis Hargrave, uh Chairman Talmadge, if I may say one thing.
Yes, sir.
Yes, related in and uh related to the history of the fire access road. Um, Ventura County Fire Department revised their standards uh following the Thomas Fire regarding a number of standards. And one of those was that you had to have in a situation like this, a second point of access for emergency purposes. It is, uh, as, as staff had indicated, it's activated by a uh sensor pad for exit. And it never has to be knox boxed for exit. They want it to be able to be used and, and quite or frankly, the way the fire department told us, they want residents to be aware that it's there. They don't want them to be surprised that it's, you know, there. So um, it's activated by a pad for exit westbound to go to central. You cannot access it eastbound coming home from central. So if you think you're going to take a shortcut, which is kind of a pointless shortcut anyway, because the Springville interchange operates at level of service A. You know, you can, you can easily get through that intersection, so it's no problem. But the uh, but that was a requirement post-Thomas Fire of Ventura County standards in keeping with what Cal Fire had recommended. We are not in a very high fire zone at Springville. Uh, that's not a, you know, that's a positive for this property. But we are still um the mandatory standards for Ventura County Fire. It was a long struggle to wrestle through with them, but staff and we and Public Works were closely together on it. Fortunately, the city owns the right of way all the way out uh to central on daily drive. So it's more a matter of improving the roadway with a bike path as well within that right of way, and that's a condition of the track map. And um, and the other unfortunate thing when you talk about HOA dues as was raised is it's common policy now within the city, all of Springville, except the arterial or backbone streets are all private streets now and HOAs all have taken over that burden because the city, like every other city we work with, has taken the position that because the state took away so much uh maintenance money that went towards streets when they uh borrowed funds permanently from cities. Um, it's now become standard practice in almost every city that even if they're not gated, streets are now private and they're an HOA load. Uh, that's again, Springville is almost all that, that way. Most of those streets, when you drive through, they're private streets with the exception of Earl Joseph Drive, uh, a portion of it. And uh, and as opposed to Village at the Park, that was the last real major public street project the city did fifteen years ago. So I hope that answers that, that, those couple of questions.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Hargrave. Yeah, I'm very familiar with the Los Angeles County fire requirements for ingress egress. Uh, theirs is a little bit more restrictive. They're down at seventy-five units.
Correct.
You have to have um a dual access. If you're less than seventy-five, you're okay, but whatever.
Right.
Anyway, um, any other questions from the commission for the applicant? Commissioner Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Talmadge. Uh, I think one's for Ben and one's for Dennis. Ben, um on the, the park, i- is that to be dedicated to the um Pleasant Valley Parks and Rec? Will, will that become part of their system? That's my understanding. Okay, so, so that park will be available to the public at large?
Yes.
All right, that was something that I wanted to clarify. There was a letter from a, a resident who was concerned about the other Springville park uh not having restroom facilities and, and this park having restroom facilities and but the only clarity I needed there was, was whether both parks actually are uh fully accessible by the public at large. All right. Uh, and then Dennis, uh, and for both of you, thank you for that wonderful presentation. Ben, I really liked the timeline. We don't usually get something that detailed. I know it's a rough timeline, but um appreciated that presentation and Dennis, the same with you as always, you are very detailed. Um, and, and that's uh much appreciated. You mentioned at one point that there could be an extension of the pedestrian uh bike path to the east. Um, I, I, at least I thought that's what I, I heard through the uh, you know, the already built-out Springville area. At what point would that occur? How would, how would that occur and, and at what point would that occur?
Well, I'll, you could probably defer to a community development to some degree, but our discussions with community development have been that as you know, there is still a six-plus acre vacant parcel on the east side across the street from this, from the park. And that's the one with the screen fence around it and we're still bringing in dirt and to finish that off. Um, we technically, since that part is not developed yet, we have the ability to run almost a mirror image of the bike path uh going, if you cross the crosswalk at uh Springville and Ponderosa. So in other words, where this bike ends in the northeast corner of the park, if you cross the crosswalk and then got on a path and went immediately south, it would join that paved road along the berm. So we have the ability to design it into whatever the ultimate project is on that side. And Public Works and C Capital Improvements Division of Public Works has uh suggested that and community development has uh also put that bug in our ear. And so we've plugged it into whatever site plans may come for that site in the future. And then, and then the rest of it's already paved all the way over to the east end of Comstock where there's a steel gate right now, if you've noticed that, that kind of closes that off so the public can't get in there. And that's up to Capital Improvements and Public Works to figure out how to do that. But it, it sounds like they probably put some kind of gate structure that would keep vehicles out and allow bikes to pass through, kind of like we have at the uh, over between Lamplighter and Village at the Park and going behind the Jehovah's Witness Church and joining onto the other bike path at Caiaguas Creek. So uh, you know, I'm a, I am a multi-times-a-week user of the Caiaguas Creek Bike Path. And so I'm a huge advocate of us getting more safe street kind of setups where people don't have to compete with cars in class two bike lanes.
Right. It would be, it'd be great to have that bike path all the way through the Springville area. Um, and I would encourage staff and developer of that final piece to, to um see what can be done about, about making that happen. Um, that's all I have.
Are there any other questions from the commission? I have one uh sort of pardon the pun down in the weeds. Uh, has to do with the uh storm retention basin. Uh, there was a comment about uh there are storm drains and then there's drainage to the uh storm basins. Do the um storm drains throughout the project drain into those basins? And then they in turn drain to a, I'll call it a central drain that goes out from the project? Or are there like two things? Surface runoff goes to the basins and other, which is captured in a storm drain, goes a separate way. Which, which way is it?
Actually, they wind up at the uh same place. There's two basins if you look at it. There's an easterly one below the pool and then there's a westerly one behind some homes. And if you, if unfortunately you don't have the tentative track map in front of you, but a storm drain, actually, this is, you know, getting in the weeds, I'll get in the weeds for you now. Uh, there is a area of runoff north of Ponderosa Drive coming from the open slopes of Spanish Hills. And there is a small catch basin above Ponderosa Drive. And that goes into a storm drain pipe, Ponderosa. Ponderosa Drive has storm drain pipes that then join into that. They go down between the residences and the park and go into that easterly basin. And then the rest of the subdivision either goes in that easterly one or the west one. And there are two existing storm drain boxes under the 101 that come out on the south side in the industrial zoned property south of the freeway. And then that continues to the Las Poses Hills drain. So the water quality treatment all happens before it goes under the freeway.
Got it, got it. Yeah, I, it wasn't clear to me if there are two or one, so I, yeah, I understand. Thank you. I I don't have any further questions on that now. Are there any other questions from the commission? All right, at this point, I would like to open the for public comment on this particular matter. That's wrapping. We're now open. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment on this item?
Chairman Talmage, I see, oh, there is one hand raised, a Dave Stevenson.
Dave Stevenson, okay. Mr. Stevenson, good evening. Are you there?
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Got a little bit of echo too. I'll try to not just talk too loud, I don't hear that. You're not hearing that echo, are you?
A little bit, but go ahead.
Okay, the question relates to, hang on, let me turn down my volume here. It relates to the, so I live in Las Poses Estates overlooking the Springville current development and the 101 freeway. I lived here since 2003. Back in 2017, I noticed an increase in freeway noise when the noise abatement berm was put up between the existing Springville homes and the 101 freeway. At that time, I I met with, that was October 2017. And what I was noticing was just increased noise in my backyard inside I face the freeway. He told me the time to wait until, you know, the construction was completed, hoping that some of the building would help block the freeway noise. I didn't notice any decrease when the when the building of the current spring was completed. I'm not sure. I suspect that the berm might be projecting the freeway noise up into neighborhoods above the current project. And I've noticed, as I said, that that increase. So I I had two questions or requests. One was just looking into whether, based on the current Camry noise map, the the decibel levels in various areas. Are we currently based on the Springville project that's done and that berm in place? Are we within the targeted decibel constraints of that initial project? In in homes that overlook the freeway from the hills above? And the second is just a question about the decision to go to the berm versus a a wall. Again, I my thought might be that a wall being more expensive is less attractive to the developer. A berm is, I understand, less expensive. I could be wrong. But but a wall might deflect the noise backwards instead of up. And that's, that's my main concern, adding another berm that might project more freeway noise up into the neighborhood rather than back in the industrial area. So again, thank you for taking my question and any, any answers now would be appreciated or any follow-up in the future would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Are there any other comments from the public?
Chairman Talmage, I see no other hands raised.
All right, were there any late communications in writing or email regarding this particular project that the commission should be aware of?
There were no additional written comments that were received, aside from the two that were initially sent to all of the commissioners.
Understand. Okay, so we, there's nothing new. And we don't have anyone else in the audience that wants to comment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
With that said, I'll close the public hearing. That was a gavel. Close the public hearing and would staff care to comment on any question that has come up?
I would like Mr. Hargrave, if he's inclined, to please respond to the berm. And we understand that the sound attenuation associated with the berm has been successful. But I'd like him to accommodate the request from the resident in light of the fact that he's been familiar with the development and build out of the site.
Right, thank you, Mr. Bakker.
Certainly.
You're on again.
Okay, here's my overall view on the berm, first of all. I can't address the specifics of the homeowners. Either perception or actual experience of noise increases and what they were related to. There's a possibility some of that noise is related to the actual extension of Ponderosa Drive and Springville Drive connected to the freeway. That's happened during this time, but I wouldn't want to represent anything related to how upper elevations work. What we do know from the berms technically is that the indoor and outdoor decibel ranges of the city have been mitigated to within city standards by construction of the berm for all of the existing Springville areas. And I can't imagine if the noise levels at Ponderosa Drive don't exceed city standards, that as you went further north, they would exceed city standards. So that would be my non-objective comment to the, to his first comment about how his noise has increased. It may have perceptively increased, but I don't see any situation where it's been beyond the city standards. That would be my expression on that. Specifically about cost of berms. Any developer we've ever worked with would much rather build a wall because it's a one-time cost. A berm, including grading it, landscaping it, irrigating it and maintaining it, probably costs on the order of two to three times as much as any ten-foot-tall wall would cost to build. And so you also give up land when you build a berm as well. Because it's got a two-to-one slope and it's got a toe and a top. And so that berm is probably about fifty feet wide in terms of the footprint it takes up on the property. And from a home builder's position, they'd much rather have another fifty-foot-wide lot out there if they had their way going all along the site. So with that, it's not a cost issue. It was actually a precedent that was set by Village at the Park. We put the berm in Village at the Park. The city council, when they approved the Springville specific plan, saw that we had successfully mitigated noise for the sports park by building that berm. And they also liked the visual along the 101 of having a not seen walls. And instead, you know, you go through Thousand Oaks and some other areas, you know, like in Newbury Park, they've built twelve-foot sound walls along parts of the 101. It's not nearly as attractive as a landscape berm. So that's the method behind the madness, I guess, if lack of any other term. But that was our intent with Village, and they adopted it for Springville long before we were involved in Springville. And the noise mitigations have worked for the apartments and the homes at at the Springville projects. We know that, and staff has worked closely to make sure they were properly done.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrave. I might add as a, just a point of information, there's also a sound berm adjacent to the railroad track along Lewis Road.
Yes.
So as you go from essentially Adolfo down towards, or it starts at Upland and then goes down towards Adolfo.
Right, and that one works well because instead of being a straight vertical wall, they made it a crib wall that had planting cells in it, and it softened and released and reduced the amount of bounce going back to those homes on the other side of Lewis Road.
Right. Any other comments or questions? All right, we had a meeting of the Architectural Review Committee. Vice Chairman Espinoza is chair of that committee. Can you give us a committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Talmage. We met preceding the Planning Commission regular meeting. Heard the presentation regarding the various diverse architectural styles of all the individual units, saw elevation maps. All comments were generally very positive regarding the architectural styles in the floor plans as well. I think there were some questions and concerns raised on one particular architectural plan style regarding the windows, which was the wall space that was showing on one of the elevation views. And the applicant explained that on that particular side of the residence with that limited window space, it was not really a view location where the resident was going to have any sort of view other than across the way to their neighbor. And there there was a sort of a mitigation of trying to look into each other's residences there that were trying to curtail in limiting that amount of window space. But other than that, the 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 committee felt they were very well done. Were were supportive of the styles and floor plans. One member of the public commented, who also commented on the windows as well. And we used up about twenty-nine of the thirty minutes we had in all that discussion.
Thank you.
That's our report. Thank you.
Thank you. You did well. At this point, I would open up the discussion of the commission regarding the project. And then the ultimate action that we will be taking about approving the residential plan development 195 for Lenar Homes. So are there any comments from the commission at this point? Commissioner Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Talmage. I really like the project, the architectural blending of the four products within the four and six unit areas. And and therefore really across the site. I I think it will will make for an excellent architectural aesthetic appearance. I like the public benefit features, the the bike paths, the pedestrian, the park. It's it's a benefit to to Camry residence everywhere. I like the way the amenities are aligned along Springville and the freeway. It will have a very soft curb appeal and it will have a nice look for for those who are traveling, you know, adjacent to and and along the project. So I have have no problem supporting this project at this point.
Thank you. Any more commission comments? Commissioner Edsall.
Yeah, I like the project and design as well, and I I think it really hits a need that we have in Camry for single-family detached. So we'll have another group of those available. I think Dennis Hargrave satisfied my concern about the parking due within something that dense. And it's happy to hear that they have parking well in excess of the the minimum requirements. You know, again, the architect was good. I support the project. One thing the developer mentioned is that they automatically would prepare a noise study. And then, you know, Chairman Talmage mentioned there's some mitigating things, maybe with insulation in the wall and the windows and things. And and I wondered, is that a current, is it one of the conditions in the set of conditions to do a noise study or that? Does staff know the answer to that? Because i- if it isn't, I think it would be good to put that in there, that there'd be a noise study done. So then they could work with staff and see what kind of freeway noise mitigation they that they might need to not have the the units noisy once they're completed.
It is not a condition, but it could certainly be a recommendation for a condition to be added.
Yeah, that that's what I would suggest. The developer said that they do that on their own anyway, so it probably wouldn't hurt to make it a condition. And that'll force, you know, staff and the developer to to make sure that doesn't get overlooked in the construction design and the picking of the materials and windows and things.
Jackie, I just wanted to ask, wasn't there requirements to the environmental impact report that ensured that it must comply with the city's noise ordinance?
Um. In the supplemental EIR, I believe that there was a, there is an existing mitigation measure that talks about the roofs having to have a certain installation due to aircraft noise. And then we do have our our municipal code requirements already in place that already have standards for interior noise levels as well.
Okay.
And it is typical in the Springville area that we do have the noise studies prepared by the developer, as we've done in all the other projects, that show where and if any noise mitigation is required.
Okay, yeah, staff satisfied with the way it is, and then I'm I'm fine with that as well. Thank you.
Is there anything else? Commissioner Edsall?
It's a good point. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Vandermuil.
Thank you. I just want to say I really enjoy the variety and the architectural styles and the colors. I like the walking path to go through it and the the pool, the recreation area for it, which is a big help to the residents. I will still be concerned about the driveways and the parking, just because even grocery store parking lots and driveways scare me after getting hit by a couple of cars. But it's nice to know that they are a little wider than the existing ones that we see through Springville or Village or over Village at the Park. And I'm glad to hear that they are concerned over the HOA and developing the cost for that. Because from what I see, there are some pretty high-dollar items that are going to be have to be maintained by the association. Most of them hopefully years out in the reserve accounts, but still need to be planned for. So it really turned out a nice-looking development. I think it's going to do well and look well when it's done. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Vice Chairman Espinoza.
Well, first off, I want to start out by saying that bringing up the matter of the size of lots and yard space. I certainly didn't want that to come across as being a critique, but I did want to, and I really appreciated the discussion and the response from the applicant about about the you know, the the provisions that are that are homeowners available with a park and a rec center and everything that comes along with that. Because it does kind of have a bit of a hybrid feel. But I think it's important that, you know, whoever's listening in on the public, who might though have any criticism about the size of the lots and the yard space, they understand you know, the thinking that went into this kind of a development. And I think it's really a a good project, a positive project. It certainly adds to the housing inventory, which we all know is a, has been an issue across the state. But we are just, you know, continuing to take steps to 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 meet, you know, housing goals. And this is a way of achieving that with this particular type of detached housing. And I think that I appreciate all of the comments and all the feedback that Mr. Hargrave and Mr. O'Neil provided, so that we have that discussion and that understanding how how this all came about in the planning phase. And honestly, I think that it it's going to be really a a positive addition to the community. And I look forward to seeing the completion of the project. I hope everything goes well with the moving of the Sholi House. Look forward to seeing uh the completion of the project. I hope everything goes well with the moving of the Sholey House. And uh I'm fingers crossed there. But uh otherwise, I can support this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? I have a few comments and I wanted to first talk about the Sholey House. And I I too express the same concern that everything moves okay. Um I know that the supplemental EIR had a a good discussion and uh. About how it's going to be evaluated, how things are going to be moved. So that's very important. And uh we haven't really talked about what the exterior finish of the Sholey House is going to be. Do you know that yet? Uh I'm really addressing the question to the developer. Do you know what that material is going to be? Is it going to be? The same as what was there or is it going to be something new?
Actually, uh the historical standards call for the exterior of the house to be. Uh to utilize that existing siding if at all possible.
Okay.
And so it will not be resurfaced with anything like stucco or anything like that. If it has replacement siding, the siding is intended to look. As much as possible like the original siding. So it will be a wood-sided house. What you don't see now is it had a small porch. With a a couple of pillars that we completely framed the whole thing in because it just kept getting, you know, vandalized. But uh it will have a step-up front porch on it and uh. The back will have to be ADA accessible somehow, but the front of the house will have a, you know, will have steps like it did back in the old days and uh. And I don't know what the color will be. So that's about the only question I have about the house is. You know, uh well, that's the only question about what what it will look like, will be what color will be. We have to historically research that. My guess is white, but I'm not sure. Uh but then the rest of it is just fingers crossed that it doesn't crumble when we pick it up and try to move it 300 yards.
Right. And uh the roof is going to be a similar uh. Looking roof material. I don't think you want to use old shingles, but.
I don't think we can use. I mean, we would have to use fully a fireproof shingle to meet code at this point. But all of the interior finishes can be all modern. So as opposed to the Camario Ranch. Which became and remains a money pit quite likely. Uh this this can be. Uh modernized on the inside, so it's functional for the new owner.
Yeah, I understand. Is there any uh thought about uh using um period fixtures in the inside such as hardware? Door hardware, cabinets, uh lighting, uh sconce lighting, things like that?
It's not required, and so it's just going to be a matter of uh taste and which direction we go. There's there's a. There's a difference of opinion among a number of people in that field, whether whether it uh. You know, how how far do you chase it for simulations and if you can or cannot find the interior? But the Department of the Interior requires the exterior to be as faithfully reproduced as we can find from any historical photos.
Yeah, I get it. I I I've had the experience where if you have uh three uh historical uh quote experts. Uh you're going to end up with about five or six opinions, so I get it.
Um yeah.
Question on the uh the barn and shed that is currently in a state of great disrepair falling down.
Yes.
The wood in that has a great value. And I'm wondering if there's any attempt or thought on the part of the developer in reusing that wood. Um if nothing else, making it available to people so that it just doesn't end up in a uh. Dumpster or in the landfill. Because this is beautiful wood and would be great for other uses.
We have a long list of people who have said, I'll take some of your wood. So we know, we know the wood will not be uh wind up in a landfill. Um that Lennar has a landfill diversion requirement according to the state that would cover that anyway. Uh we think a lot of this may be uh first growth or what they call old growth lumber. So it's got some tremendous character once you plane it down. My deceased father-in-law was a cabinet builder and he longed for this wood 10 years ago when he saw it, so uh. So we've talked to the Historical Society. We'll work with them to provide some to them, we hope. We'll probably try to repurpose some for use within the community for visible places where people can see it. And uh work with vendors who can who can try to get us um some practical reuse of this that possibly we could even remarket within the community. As finished product would be very.
I my my concern was that if uh someone's just going to look at it and say, ah, it's an old beat-up building, turn it down and put it in the dump, so.
No, we're actually now, we've actually now heard there's people that want to want the uh the roofing material too. They say that it has architectural salvage value, so go figure.
Um okay, well, that's.
Rust rusty, rusty metal roof, you know?
You get it. I get it. I understand. Okay, um. I think that's all the questions I had and I I wanted to offer some comments as well. I I think that the developer uh has done a a magnificent job in putting a project together. Certainly answered the questions that have come up tonight from the commission. Uh we expressed concerns about ingress egress for fire and I think those have been addressed. We have talked about. Um access for bike and pedestrians. That has been addressed. Um we have the uh the little trail that goes up the hill with a a viewpoint vista bench, and we've talked about that. We've talked about the architecture of the units and we have four different styles that we're looking at and different sizes. Uh different motifs on them, different colors, and it's not to me a typical, well, let's just make up one little uh. Model here and stamp it and just plant it all over the place. We've got a good variety of um of what's going on and I think uh it will make for. In my opinion, excellent development and something we all can be proud of. So. I certainly support the project in moving forward. And um I'm very excited to see what happens with the some of the other details we talked about. Um so thank you very much for your time today. And I wanted to thank uh all of the staff that's present and for their hard work. I know this has gone through. What, three different planners and and whatnot over the over the years and uh of course. Uh we end up uh I think in a in a very good position. And I thank Mr. Stevenson for um showing up and and offering his comments. Uh regarding the sound attenuation and sound from the freeway. So um with that, uh I'll ask again, are there any last-minute thoughts or questions by the commission? Of either staff or the developer? Vice Chair Espinoza?
One question I forgot to ask was uh whether these units were going to be uh equipped with air conditioning and if not, you know, if there was adequate space for condenser units. If homeowners want to put them in.
Yes, it's there.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, we uh we closed the public hearing. We have had the comments. And now we're at the point of uh actually considering an adoption of a resolution. Uh PC dash 2021 parent seven approving RPD 195. Subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Is there a motion for? Will some make a motion to uh adopt the resolution?
I move that we waive further reading and vote to adopt as as presented.
We have to have a reading person.
Yeah, we have to read the ordinance first, uh at least the ordinance part, then we can waive reading. So is there a motion to uh read the resolution?
A call for a motion to for a resolution.
Thank you. There's a second.
Second.
Very well. Director.
Yes, thank you very much. Residential Plan Development 195, Resolution Number PC 2021 dash seven. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camrio. Approving a request by Lenor Homes of California Incorporated for a residential plan development permit. To construct 158 for sale, single-family detached residential units. In the RPD 8U zone further um described within the Springville specific plan area. And set forth as residential plan development permit number 195.
Thank you.
I'll make now.
Wait for the video for adoption or.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Somebody seconded. Commissioner.
I did. I seconded it.
Um we'll have a vote on uh the waiving of the further reading. Uh could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Commissioner Edsall?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Espinoza?
Yes.
Chairman Talmage?
Yes.
Motion unanimously. Thank you.
That concludes our action on this item. Thank you all for your presence and uh again. Thank you to Mr. O'Neil and Mr. Hargrave, who mean with us this evening and answering all our questions and concerns. And um Mr. Stevenson for offering comments. And uh of course, all of the staff that's out there that had a piece of this, and I think just about everybody touched this somewhere, sometime, somehow. So. Thank you all very much. All right. We move on to um. The director's report. Mr. Vaca, do you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to tell you all that I really appreciate the great dialogue and all of your participation in our. Joint meeting with the city council last week to discuss the housing element update and the workshops that we've. Um had the public participate in to date. And I appreciate everyone's input and support and and good commentary and. Um we look forward now on May 4th to having the draft. 2021, 2029 housing element. Presented to the Planning Commission for consideration to recommend to the city council. And uh hopefully that would progress to the city council on May 26th. And then be forwarded to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for their 60-day review. Also, at the meeting on May 4th, we anticipate the land division for Steve Thomas. His application is to subdivide the property between the existing BMW dealership and the former. Mini dealership so that that um former mini dealership location could be reused. And it's anticipated that Tesla will be occupying that property. Assuming that it is subdivided and then repurposing the existing building. For a Tesla dealership and service center. So we're excited about that opportunity for our community. We will also have the uh Planning Commission review the city's um interpretation of our general plan to determine consistency. With the various capital improvement programs that we um will be uh presenting to the commission for coordination to ensure consistency with our general plan. And that um that will do it for now. We may um anticipate a Planning Commission Ordinance Committee and. Um if that is set, we will definitely let the committee members know ahead of time. So thank you very much for your hard work this evening. It was good discussion. We agree with the commission that that's a good project. We're happy that staff completed very thorough analysis and strong recommendation and. We think it'll be a good addition to Springville and the community um in that western part of San Diego. So thank you very much.
Uh Mr. Vaca, question on the May 4th meeting. Are we going to be meeting in person or are we on Zoom?
Yes, that's a great question. We will be meeting in person.
Yay.
We're looking forward to having everybody back together in the city council chambers. So we will be meeting in person. We're going to do our best to follow uh the norms that are established by the city now. For the time being, there's going to be some social distancing requirements.
Right.
We'll make sure you all get the information necessary to comply with those parameters.
Uh another question, um. We have phone calls coming up next week about uh the uh review by the Planning Commission on the consistency of CIP program. Is that in lieu of what we're going to be doing on the 4th or is the 4th the summer?
It's an update, so um we will be talking to each planning commissioner individually. To let them know that what has happened in the past is being changed and we'll give everybody an update in those meetings that have been scheduled.
Okay, and then so the 4th will actually be the the full update of what we're doing, a some of what.
Fourth is going to be um the Planning Commission's consistency review with the general plan for the capital improvement programs.
Okay, all right, okay.
All right.
Are there uh? Are there any comments by the uh Planning Commission before we adjourn? Anyone have anything they want to say?
Nope, just look forward to being in person next meeting. That'll be great. It's been a long time.
It has been a long time and uh Commissioner Murphy, thank you for when you were the chair of uh dealing with the. Tube and um the Zoom and all that stuff, so I'm really looking forward to seeing you all in uh in person. I uh I guess this is a self-serving paid announcement. We had a tree trimmer here today and did a massive trimming on our orange tree and I have more oranges than any you can imagine. But uh if I have some left, I'm going to bring them to the meeting, so. Anyway, does anyone else have any comments? Well, I thank you all very much for your patience tonight and um. I think this meeting stands adjourned and we'll see you all in a couple of weeks in.